And then I'm going to share screen.
Okay, so it's seven o'clock. This is Rebecca Nash. I'm calling the meeting to order. Ellen, do you need help with the roll or are you all set?
I think I'm all set. Is Mary here?
Not yet.
Mary's not here yet, but everyone else is.
Okay, I didn't see Barbara, but.
I'm here.
Okay, great. Now that was, I think, everyone, other than that, I caught everybody else. Thank you.
Great.
So I'm going to keep you guys on mute, so there's always going to be that awkward pause before I answer you.
Okay, and if I don't give you enough time to pop back in, just interrupt. And that goes for anyone. It's, I never know how long to wait. All right, so apparently, Brian, we have citizens. Do they have any comments? Fair enough. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the meetings from, or the minutes from the meeting on June 15th? Okay, so John moved and Carol seconded. Is there any discussion of them? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that passed. Is there any correspondence?
Nothing.
Okay, great, I think. And Carol, I'll turn it over to you for the treasurer's report.
Well, I don't have official reports yet from last month or, well, June or July. Because of transitions in staffing at Town Hall, we don't have all the figures in yet. To basically explain it the way I understand it, under normal circumstances, every month, typically weekly, a deposit's made by Gail or some designated staff member to the account, which is at Dime Bank. It's a municipal market, money market savings account. And the bills that are paid from our account are paid by the town of Ledgers, so they're town of Ledgers checks. And then once a month, they withdraw the total of that amount from our account. However, so far, our bank statements haven't been showing those withdrawals. So I can tell you that our bank statement currently shows $27,124.37. But that really should be lower because it should reflect the expenditures of the most recent two months. But they, I don't yet have the record of that. So that's where the treasurer's report is.
Carol, just an update to your report. I just finally talked to Ian, and he has done a transfer of $1,100 plus. And I spent the time figuring out where that comes from, so it will show up for you next month. That did not cover everything, so I'm hoping there'll be another transfer for last year's bills.
Okay, and do we know whether they actually paid all the ones?
Oh yeah, they did pay. They will definitely pay. Just the transfer was not done.
So there will be another one in addition to that $1,100 plus?
Yes, I hope so.
So I, when I get the specific figures, then I can plug them into the Excel and do the reporting. Other questions? Not sure I can answer any, but I could try.
We appreciate the offer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Beth.
No, I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, great, Carol, thanks. And Gil, your report.
It's getting an eventful year, and it's a pandemic. It's not enough to deal with. We've had a tropical storm that came along to create more havoc. Okay. I hope all of you came through without any damage or power issues. We did lose power at the library for quite a few days. It was out until Monday, August 10th, during the middle of that heat wave. We were able to keep Gil Street Library open longer during the outage as a cooling center for those who needed it. If any of you noticed, the mayor posted on the forum that the Gil Street Library was a cooling center, but the Bill Library had no power. So with that being said, we kept them open Wednesday evening, and we opened them on the Friday when they usually closed. And of course, they were open Saturday. So all during that outage, at least Gil Street Library was open. Summer programming went very well this summer and ended on August 8th. The Take and Make Kids Stacy provided to children and teens proved to be very popular. She texted me today the result of a survey she asked people to fill out. And in general, the participants were very, very pleased with the summer program. In fact, one of them went so far as to say she usually goes to Groton because it's larger. But because of the current situation, she decided to come to Ledgers, and she was very happy that she did. Very pleased with the way things were done, and will continue to come to our library. So I thought that was a good, a good thing to hear. Given the uncertainty of the pandemic situation, Stacy will continue with virtual programming in the fall. Elaine and Lisa will do likewise for adults. The Lion Board has been meeting weekly on Zoom to share information about what they've been doing and how the reopening has gone. There is still some libraries in Lion that have not reopened, and throughout Connecticut, it's now up to 59% of the libraries that have reopened, as of the number I looked at today. One of the issues that came up is what a library would do if someone in the building, either a staff member or a patron, was exposed to COVID. And him and the director recommended a policy to her board based on something the school superintendent did. And I included a copy of that policy, which takes a proactive step of closing the library for two weeks if someone in the building is exposed to COVID. Of course, the decision to close for us would be up to the mayor. But I think it's worth thinking about this to be ready if it does happen. And I'm happy to share this with the mayor if you think it would be prudent to do so. And we can talk about that later on the agenda. I'd also like to bring up overdue fines. Libraries across the country are eliminating fines on overdue items and have discovered it actually helps to get materials returned. According to an NPR story in November 2019, lifting fines has had a surprising dual effect. More patrons are returning to the library with their late materials in hand. Chicago saw a 240% increase in return of materials within three weeks of implementing its fine-free policy. The library system also had 400 more card renewals compared with that time last year. Studies also show the cost of tracking overdue items and collecting payment far outweighs what actually comes in. Now, granted, Chicago library system is much larger than Ledgers, but on a smaller scale, I think we would see some of the same results. Many of the Lion libraries are eliminating fines as a best practice, and they're encouraging all of us to follow suit. According to Andy Gardner at Lion, there were 10 libraries that decided to eliminate fines for overdue items. Our fine collection rate went way down when we initiated the automatic renewals. And during our shutdown, we waived all fines. I mentioned at my budget hearing last spring that I was considering this along with the other Lion libraries. And when I say budget hearing, it was the budget hearing with town council and the mayor. So they've heard this. Last year, we turned in $956 in fines and $460 in lost books. Of course, we were closed for three months. In a typical year, we'd turn in about $3,000, plus or minus in fines. I would like to recommend that we eliminate fines, but still charge for lost materials. The Lion libraries who have done this say they actually collect more in the donation jar, and it does not affect the return rate. People are less afraid to return something if it's late. It does mean the town would get fewer revenues from the library. And as I thought about this, the decision to eliminate it, the mayor may be able to override that, I'm not sure. He may or may not allow us to do that. I think we can make the recommendation and go by what he says in terms of fines. Patrons would still be held accountable for returning items and would be charged for items not returned after a given time period. If items are not returned, a patron is blocked from borrowing materials until the items are either returned or paid for. And again, we can discuss it further down the agenda. And then the building news, Bill Library is limping along this summer with an air conditioner that struggles to keep the building cool. Shaun is hoping to be able to replace and upgrade the whole HCA system at Bill this fall. And that is my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll have a question when we get to talking about the lost fees.
Okay.
This is Beth, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I figured it out. I think so. All right, so if no other questions, how about committee reports? John, do you have anything from the friends?
They've been fairly inactive because of the virus. However, you know, the bookseller, especially a Gail Sperry, needs to be worked on. And I do have a question. We understand that volunteers are still not allowed in the library, so it would be difficult for us to go on and do anything to Gail Sperry, the bookseller. When, Gail, do we expect volunteers to be able to go into the library?
I'm kind of waiting to see what happens this fall. And I'm also listening to what other Lion libraries are doing. We, in fact, this is one more thing I was going to bring up. We are actually doing a lot more than many libraries are in terms of open hours and allowing patrons in the building. I, in fact, asked a question last week. How many libraries that are open Sundays are pleading to open Sundays? And only one is thinking about it. Most of them are operating on a reduced schedule, and they're really limiting people in the building. So I'm kind of waiting to see what happens. I wanted to see how it worked out with the schools going back. I understand they're now going to do a hybrid model. So we'll see how that works out when school starts.
Okay, how does that affect the volunteers for the Gail Sperry Library?
Well.
I don't get the connection.
It's more the allowing extra people in the building. Although I thought we had talked about volunteers being able to work in the bookseller at the Friends meeting. I thought that was going to happen. It builds that we're not having volunteers working in the basement.
Right.
But since the bookseller is open, you know, for people to go down there, I thought we had said the volunteers could start working down there, although we're not accepting any donations right now.
So they can go down and work? Is that what you're trying to mean?
They can, right.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes. In the bookseller, they can go down and work, yes.
All right, good. Thank you. But they've been inactive, basically, so hopefully, things will change. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any old business? Taking that as a no? All right, so for new business, in order for us to discuss the overdue fines, if I could get a motion to recommend eliminating overdue fines while keeping the charges for lost materials? If someone would want to make a similar sounding motion?
I'll make the motion. And they would be charged for lost materials after 60 days.
Is there a second?
A second. It's Beth.
Okay, and Beth, do you want? And Beth, I know you had a question, so we'll start with you.
Well, actually, it was about how long does it currently churn from missing or overdue to lost?
Actually, I think right now it's less than 60 days. I'm not sure exactly what that number is, but I want to say it's more like 45 days. It goes to lots of, whether this is because to build stairs at that point in Lion.
I'm not set on 60 days. I just threw in a number of 40 days. I'd be happy to change it to that.
Yeah, I think that I would say probably stick with what you already have because then you won't have to change it later. And it's already set up in your system to do that. But I think getting rid of the fines, again, but collecting lost fees is a good idea.
I have a question, Gil. The money right now that you get for lost books, does it go to replace it, or does it go to the town?
It goes to the town. We used to get, in our budget, the following year. But when they did the budget cuts a few years ago, they eliminated that, and we haven't gotten it back.
Okay.
So fines and lost books go way to the town.
Okay, great, thank you.
Gil, this is Barbara.
I had. Go ahead, Barbara.
I was just having a question. Do patrons have an option to provide a replacement copy?
Yes, they do.
Of the book?
Yes, they do, okay. But it has to be a like copy.
Okay.
You need a paperback for a hardback.
Right.
And actually, Barbara, I have a question for you. Do you know if Groton is thinking of this?
Well, it's up, it's, we're discussing it. We've been waiving fines since we reopened. And it's been a very positive response. And I think we've gotten more materials back. Like, I've noticed a lot of very long overdue books coming back. So, but as far as a permanent thing, I know that it's in discussion, but I don't know where they stand right now.
I had a question just on the amounts. I mean, I know, like, if we typically bring in, like, $3,000 and it's been 900. I mean, that's not just because we were closed for a couple of months. I imagine that's more just from the automatic renewals. So the amount we were going to collect anyhow was going to probably drop significantly.
That's true, yes.
Okay, all right. And I think that's, that's good for us to know. And I also think really being able to emphasize the fact that we get more materials back and so that the net, the net result is actually a cost savings for the town, I think is really important. Because it just, Gil and I talked briefly about this before. It's just my concern that is that there might have been, you know, the perception that we were taking money away from the town at the time the town would most need it. And I think everyone just needs to really understand that this is actually, as counterintuitive as it seems, it's actually sort of a cost savings because we're more likely to get books back. So I'm in favor of this. I just wanted to put that out there. Go ahead, Cheryl.
I just have a question regarding the books coming back. So if you were to bill a patron for a lost book, is there any enforcement power?
The only, the only consequence to that is they would not be able to use their card in the library. And once the card expires, they also would not be able to use it in other libraries. Although immediately in any Lion library, it would be blocked because it would show up as having a lost item.
Okay, but there's, there's, because the fines go to, all right, so I guess a follow-up question is if the fines go to the township, where do the lost book payments come?
They go to the town as well.
So there's no guarantee that they would be then used to replace a book that's lost?
No, because they took that away from our budget. We used to get that back, but we no longer do.
So does the, if the town, if it's a revenue generator for the town, does the town levy a lien on somebody who may not pay it?
I don't think so, no. No, they don't go to that extent. And some of the larger libraries at one time hired a collection agent to go after lost books. In our case, it was never worthwhile to do that because the cost of the collection agent was more than the value of what you were getting back. So we never went to that extent. And even the libraries who were doing it, I believe, stopped doing it for that reason as well.
No, it doesn't make any sense for the library to have to pay for a collection of that if they're not getting the revenue from it.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
Rebecca, can I?
Anyone? Yes. So is there any more discussion?
The only other thing I'd like to add is the other cost factor with this is tracking the overdues and sending out notices. It has a cost associated with it. And we would eliminate doing that and just go to the bill, just have bills if they were not returned after the set amount of time. So they wouldn't get a reminder notice in the mail that their book is overdue. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's another, another savings for the budget in the town in the long run.
No, I think that's a really good point, and go ahead, Ralph. Or Carol.
Did the motion get changed to 45 days then, as opposed to 60?
Yes. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, so if we could, if we're voting in favor of the amended amendment? Sorry. To basically do away with overdue fines and bill for lost materials after 45 days. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, but Rebecca, just for clarification, we don't have the authority for this, right? Because it's a town, we can recommend?
You're correct. Yeah, it should be a recommendation. I remembered that the first time, lost at the second, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, so the, yep, no, I appreciate that. And anyone opposed to that recommendation? Okay, so that unanimously passes. Okay, so then moving on to the possible COVID exposure policy, do we need to make a motion to recommend this, recommend sharing this with the mayor? Or are we just talking about the letter you shared?
I would, I would share this idea with the mayor just to get it on his, his mind as well. This is what we should do should this happen.
Do you want a motion to do that?
It, it wouldn't hurt to have a motion as a recommendation.
Cheryl, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there was a policy for the town. So Town Hall is open. If, if there's an exposure in Town Hall, is there already a policy in place?
I don't know for sure, but I did hear something last week. One, one of the staff members there was on vacation in Rhode Island. And Rhode Island became a hotspot. He could not come to work until he had a COVID test that was negative or quarantined for 14 days. So he was working at home during that time after his vacation. So they do have, they do have something in place.
I'm just wondering if.
Could I get?
I'm sorry, Rebecca, go ahead.
That's okay, go ahead.
I'm just wondering whether instead of implementing a different policy for the libraries, whether it should be consistent with what the town has.
Are you talking about?
Well, maybe. Go ahead, Beth.
Are you talking about, there's two different things. It's whether somebody can come back or versus closing down.
No, I, yeah, totally, I totally agree. I'm just wondering if there is a policy within Town Hall, not of somebody coming back, but if somebody enters Town Hall or if somebody who was an active employee who is working in Town Hall tests positive for COVID, what is the policy? You know, do they do a contact trace? Do they close Town Hall and disinfect the building? What is the town's policy? I'm just, I'm just, I don't know what it is. But I think that we should be more, if the town does have something in place, we should be consistent with the town. And if the town doesn't have something in place, then I think it's a great idea to recommend something. And it sounds like Lion has, has put together some pretty decent recommendations.
I agree with you, Cheryl, and that's the way we could approach it, is find out what the town policy is and maybe present this as an option should they not have anything in place.
Policy and the communication of it are two different things. We probably want to be in line with Town Hall policy, although we're more associated with having the public come in in larger numbers. But, but having a letter with whatever we decide for the policy, sort of of this nature, explaining it and so forth, that can be put out to the public. sort of of this nature, explaining it and stuff that can be put out to the public is a good communication part of that. I'm not sure, I presume you would put that on the, on the internet and out to our newsletter subscribers and how else would you get that out? Once we had the appropriate information and had the letter, the library letter.
Well, we, we have access to emails for all our library holders and our addresses. So we could theoretically send something out if, if that were the case.
Ah, okay. For those who have email. I know what you were doing.
Or mail, you know, we have an address as well. So we could, you know...
Go ahead, John.
As we get into the fall and winter, the flu is going to be joining us. And the flu has similar symptoms to COVID-19. So how are we going to distinguish between somebody who said they have the flu and COVID-19? And it takes a while also for for them to get tested and for them to get the results. If they wait to get tested for a week after they get the symptoms and then it's a week to get the test results back, that people in the library may have already got the virus. So, I mean, what are we going to accomplish by closing the library? It's difficult. It's a sad story.
We're not in the habit of closing the library when somebody turns out to have the flu. This is serious, but it's hard to tell which it is. But it may, if there are a lot of flu cases too, we may be bouncing back and forth between open and closed.
Same symptoms though.
It's a very complex situation and very difficult to deal with. Yeah.
Maybe the distinction is that, and, and again, I agree with Cheryl about finding out what Town Hall is doing first. But maybe the distinction is it's if someone's tested positive for COVID-19. I mean, is that, is the horse out of the barn at that point?
Well, sometimes they're contagious before they actually show symptoms. That's one of the tricky parts with this.
You know, all of this could be contagious because I'll be a while they're symptomatic.
Right. And the, the letter is basically saying that they currently have symptoms.
Right, right.
And, and, but to John's point, if you had a patron who comes into the library and they had, they're showing symptoms, for instance, or they subsequently test positive within a short period of time after, how are you going to know?
Well, that's where the contact tracing comes in. And hopefully, when they get their results, whoever gives them the results would try to find out where they had been so they could let those places know. And one of them would be the library.
That would be people with positive results on a test, not just... It's not saying that they had symptoms when they came in and we have to deal with it. It's after the fact they had symptoms.
And what are you going to do if all your staff is, is being self-isolated, is in self-isolation?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question, Cheryl. Could you repeat it?
Yeah, what are you going to do if all of your staff is, is in isolation?
Well, that's, that's one of the things that we have to come up with, what level of service we could provide. Having two buildings, if one building wasn't exposed, they could be open, could provide curbside, you know, could do things that way. And, and the library that was exposed would be closed. Again, it's, it is, it's a tricky situation and lots of complex issues to think about. A lot of what ifs.
And who's responsible for paying for the cleaning of the library and is that in the budget?
Well, it would have to be.
Right, yeah.
The town would have to do it. They had a case last year with a Town Hall employee who had, I believe it was meningitis. And they had to have a deep cleaning done at Town Hall. And I know it wasn't cheap. So it's, it's not done lightly.
What was UConn doing with this? On the news tonight, they're returning to UConn and they have four students that have tested positive for the COVID. So they're being isolated.
Could you repeat that?
There's nothing that's been said about the rest of the feedback.
John, could you repeat that? This is Beth.
Yeah, maybe lean forward a little bit. It's, we're having trouble hearing you again.
Okay. Do I want me to repeat what I said?
Yes.
Okay. UConn, on the news tonight, UConn has four students that have tested positive for COVID. They're isolating those four students, but they're not doing anything for the 3,000 kids that are there. So what's the difference between what we're proposing here and that? I mean, they're not, I guess they're gambling that the, that those four students didn't expose themselves to the students that were already there. And it may be that the place with us comes into the library. We have the shields. They're taking, you know, steps to make sure that the virus doesn't spread. So I guess my question is, do we really need to close or do we continue to operate? Just asking a question.
I think you would have to close for the deep cleaning. And I'm not sure about everybody's exposure, what the deal is for that.
But it seems kind of, I don't know, in my mind, I mean, again, I'm going to go back to what Cheryl said, that I do think we should find out what they're doing for Town Hall and be consistent with that. But it seems, I do think, just sort of rethinking it with some of the comments here tonight, to close and/or do a deep cleaning just for symptoms that could be the flu, they could be anything, maybe is a little premature and excessive. I, I don't know.
But we should have a policy for when, if they get those results back and they're positive, then we may need to take that next step. We would kind of just be folded between, I don't know. That might be part of the, the tracing. Were they here long? Did they talk to other people? I'm not sure just how detailed that is.
This is where, as I've said, many of the Lion Libraries are being extremely cautious. And I feel like we do a lot more than many of them are doing right now in terms of services they're providing. Some of them are only allowing people to come in by appointment only. And, you know, again, the reduced hours and this kind of thing of reacting to an exposure or possible exposure, not an actual positive case. I do think, Cheryl and Rebecca, that you're right. We should see what the town policy is. And maybe that's enough for us to follow. I brought this up because I thought it was something worth discussing and thinking about. And you've all raised really good points in terms of flu symptoms. Do you really need to close that, you know, that kind of thing? So I think it's a good discussion.
And maybe as part of the conversation with the mayor, you ask, what would be the trigger for having to close? You know, and, and what is the trigger for needing to notify the public? And frankly, if they don't have that policy for the Town Hall, they should. So, I mean, it's a good conversation to have.
Right, right. I would definitely bring it, bring it up with him and see what he has to say about it.
Thank you for bringing that to us.
Yeah, thank you. And along, along with that, you had mentioned that you've got people that are still coming into the library without masks. I, I'm a little concerned that, you know, even though there's a policy that says that you need them, that they're being allowed to come in.
Okay, so an email came out today from the State Library and the governor has actually updated some of the policies for the state. And one of them says that you could refuse service to anyone that comes in without a mask. It has not been a big issue for us. To my knowledge, it's only been that one person that came in at Gail Ferry. For the most part, people have been coming in with a mask on. And we do have masks to give them if they don't have one. So it's, it's not a big issue, you know, issue for us. And like I say, that came out today that we aren't authorized, is the right word, but we can refuse service to someone who does not have a mask. I don't want my staff to be in a position of, of getting into confrontation with the public over masks. And my feeling on that is if someone gives them a really hard time, we should call the police and let them deal with it.
Totally agree with that.
I think there should be a large and clear sign on the door. If we're going to deny service to those without a mask, and I think we should, but don't wait till they get inside and the staff member is stuck with dealing with it. It should say right up front when they come in. But also note that we can provide a mask if you don't have one or something. But, so that they are presented with that before they make the decision to walk in the door.
We do have a big, huge board sign at the bottom of the stairs of Bill and outside of Gail Ferry, listing all the protocols. And one of them is that masks are required.
It says required, not...
Yep, yep. But like I said, that's a new, a new update that came out today. And we can certainly update our sign to say that.
I do think for the comfort of the other patrons that want to be in there and are following the rules, that we should be pretty strict about that. I know it's a problem for staff if they have to come in.
Is there more discussion or? I mean, your staff feels pretty safe though. As you said, it's just been the one person, right?
Yes, yeah, it has, it's not been a, a big issue. You know, I've asked about that when I've talked to them.
Okay, and the signs, I, they are actually really clear. Like in some ways, we almost, it's almost better not having more information because it's almost right now like a checklist of things you need to do. Like, you know, put your books in the Dropbox, put your mask on, come in the door. And it's, it's spelled out very clearly. And it's kind of, you almost trip over the sign. So it's, I mean, in a good way. It's, it's obvious and in your face in a way it needs to be, so.
Well, we know that people don't read signs, so we had to, we had to do that.
No, I think it's great. I wasn't, I didn't mean it in a bad way, but I, you, I, like even I'm not missing the sign. You know, the person who walked by the billboard, you know, for years or the bulletin board, I guess. But, but no, I think you guys did a good job with the signs. And I'm glad for the most part, at least, people are listening. Any other business we need to discuss or are we ready to adjourn?
I just had one quick question. Um, Gail, at the last meeting, you mentioned that you were going to look, you were going to be looking into a supplement for Hoopla. Did anything come of that?
Yeah, no, I, I have not followed through on that. The one I was looking at is called Canopy. And the more I looked at it, it's, it's really a niche, a niche audience. More of like the indie films, the foreign films. Would definitely be a supplement to Hoopla, but not a replacement for it. And I have, I have held off. I have not done anything right now.
Okay, thank you. Let's check in.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Or could I get a motion to adjourn with our next meeting being Monday, September 21st at 7:00 on Zoom?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so at 7:47, I, the meeting is adjourned. And Ellen, thank you for notes. Gail, thank you for your, your comments. And everyone, thank you for being here and continue to stay well.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone.
See you, Gail.
Yeah, it's good seeing you too. Bye-bye.